Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is 9:00 AM Wednesday, October 20th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
So the next first item on the agenda is Citizen Input, and we do have a couple requests to speak. So this will be in-person testimony. So Jim Crouch, sewer for Tumalo is the discussion. So this is a three-minute public testimony for items that are not on the agenda. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks, guys, for giving us a chance to talk about the sewer system proposal for Tumalo. So our, I guess our goal is to just kind of get it, get the information out there that Tumalo is seeking the approval from, from the county commissioners for a sewer system in Tumalo. Support and also some financial support is what we're, we're asking for. We have, we have a large amount of community support for our system. We've kind of formed a pseudo-board, which most of the board members are here behind me. Done a lot of feasibility, preliminary feasibility towards the system. Have verbal support from Larry Brown, which is DEQ for Deschutes County, kind of the head of DEQ for Deschutes County, and then Solid Waste, Todd Cleveland as well. I know that Todd Cleveland has had a lot of frustrations with the community of Tumalo and the systems that are there failing. The, there's a couple other reasons. One environmental impact for, for Tumalo, having septic systems that are, you know, within some, some areas feet away from the Deschutes River. No, no way to hook into a community system. And also, there's an economic impact for a system that would go into Tumalo, and that would be, you know, Bend, Bend being the second fastest growing town in, in the U.S. I think we just, I just read a report about that a couple weeks ago. Struggling to find places to build and develop with urban growth boundaries and, and getting kind of crammed in. We have a community in Tumalo that is, has, you know, close to 100 residential lots and 40 or 50 commercial lots that could be developed but can't be because there's no sewer system in Tumalo. That would really help that alleviate some problems there. The financial support that we would, that we need to take the next step forward is feasibility. Every option that we possibly could think of, hiring an outside firm to do some feasibility studies, figure out what the best option would be to build and move forward from there. This whole proposal aligns with the Tumalo Community Plan that was written for the 2010 to 2030, two-decade period of time. Then in the community vision statements, "safe and efficient public services" is, is their, their kind of motto. And then at the end, they quoted saying, "coordinate with the Tumalo residences, residents and business owners on the creation of a sewer district in the community initiates district formation," if the community initiates district formation. So that's why we're here today.
Thank you very much. So this is the beginning of a process during our Citizen Input public testimony. So thank you for preparing for that, you know, even bringing it here today. So we've got Community Development Director and staff and our board here definitely hearing the message. Let's see what we can do to, you know, work with the community and move this forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I could just say, we, our Road Department Director, who used to be a Public Works Director in Redmond, has, has just been through a lengthy process helping the community of Terrebonne explore the feasibility and kind of key them up for the formation of a wastewater district. So I think there's a lot of useful experience to be gleaned from that. And I don't know, I, I don't know what the, what the decision process was for assigning Chris Doty to, to do that with Terrebonne, but...
Oh, Chris? Okay.
Yes, but I, I, I just, I guess I would ask Nick if, if we can explore that possibility with, with Chris to at le, at minimum, share the experience that he's had there. And I, I would also say that we are considering an American Rescue Plan funding allocation to the next stage of forming that wastewater district. And, and I certainly think that the Tumalo community should be eligible for similar kind of treatment. But we would, for that, we would need a, a letter of, of interest or, you know, kind of mini-proposal, at least to kind of get you on the list, so.
Who, who provides that? How's, how's that work?
Um, so that staff can work with you on, on, on making that happen.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Terrebonne actually came to me in 2019, and I'm going like, oh, my gosh, it's, we actually did get it completed. It was the third study done on Terrebonne. So started in 2019, they did polling of the community, you know, real hands-on, and we have a commercial district just like in Tumalo where it's, you know, it's failing and it gives Todd a lot of headaches. So, you know, now we're actually, we're, you know, it's taken a couple years, but I look where we are today, and I am really thrilled and appreciative that the community came in and, you know, said, hey, we need to do something different. And, you know, you know, Tumalo is such a lovely little spot next to the river, and we definitely want to protect it. So thank you, Jim, for coming in.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so next item for Citizen Input is Elena Johnson. So there's a request to speak referring to our decision on the EBAC recommendations. Okay, online, good. Thank you very much. On Zoom. Oh, I see the little note on the page now.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. Um, so I'm just going to read what I prepared. County Commissioners are elected to serve the people. The Employee Benefits Advisory Committee, committee, i.e., representative of the people who keep this county running, voted by more than a two-to-one ratio to allow employee access to abortion through county health insurance. This means that the people who you are supposed to work for voted for a person's autonomy over their body if they get pregnant. Tony DeBon and Patty Adair, you knowingly and willingly decided to go against this employee vote. This was a failure on both of your parts to make a decision that would serve the people, and it was a decision that could have a very real, very negative impact on an employee's life. Patty, you cited so-called full-term abortions in your reasoning to go against employee wishes. Meaning, you based your decision to block my access to healthcare on a fake medical term that is misleading and ignores science and real statistics on abortion. Here are some real statistics. According to the U.S. Census, the median income in Bend for an individual was $32,570. According to the Gootmaker Institute, the average cost of an abortion in the U.S. is more than $500. This means that roughly a fifth of a person's income is gone if they need to pay for an abortion out of pocket. That is a lot of money to lose when you're trying to keep a roof over your head and food in your stomach. Frankly, your rationale is not grounded in reality and is laughable. Tony, you cited your values as an elected official when you made this decision. Employees do not care about your values. We care about whether or not we will have to choose between paying for rent or paying for an abortion. We care about whether or not we have the right to control our own bodies. It's amazing that you opposed a mask mandate because you said, and I quote, "This is a free society. We have personal rights and responsibilities. We have liberty and freedom," end quote. Yet you think you have the authority to make decisions about whether or not someone should get an abortion. Patty and Tony, I want to know why employees in Multnomah and Lane County, as well as Oregonians with private insurance, deserve to have abortions covered by their insurance, but Deschutes County employees do not. I want to know why you think we are less deserving of healthcare and autonomy than other people are. You have both failed to meet the burden that comes with being a public servant, and I look forward to a Board of Commissioners that will act on their duty to serve the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, Alana.
So at this time, is there anybody else to speak on any topic that's not on the agenda? Is there any other hand raise feature in Zoom? Or any phone numbers? Any phone numbers that we would not recognize? Okay. So at this time, we do have other emails to the Board of Commissioners, Citizen Input Line. So there is another letter provided on the topic that Elena just spoke on regarding basically the, the same concept. There's also a request for the old K.O.A. property, Highway 97 in Cooley. I guess, Kristi, would you be able to just comment on that real quick, just to provide the current status? So, because that is an issue that's out there, why don't we use this property in the corner? And just that we had a, a response from the owner of that property real quick. So just a quick statement.
Sure, thank you so much. So I've been in contact with the government relations person for Walmart and kind of going back and forth and just discussing the county's interest and the general public's interest on potentially using that property. So I was following up last week, and she responded and indicated that Walmart is tied up in negotiations for the potential sale of that property. So at this time, that's not on the table and not an option to move forward with.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so that's very, very timely information. So we have tried many different avenues to communicate, and we finally have communicated. Government relations person has answered our request on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then multiple emails on, regarding affordable housing, some very passionate statements in here. So this all, will all be part of the record for emails received to Citizen Input Line about homelessness, encampments, and housing affordability. So at this time, seeing no other input, as I say, if anybody wants to read these, these will be attached with the minutes, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Oh, could I just say something?
Sure, please.
Yesterday was actually the anniversary of the Stabilization Center. The numbers are really quite impressive. It is unbelievable the amount of time that it is saving law enforcement in the community. And I just want to thank Holly Harris for smiling for the last three years, having her vision. I, you know, we, I had to do some research on it before I could vote for it, and I'm so happy to know that it's serving the community, making an enormous difference. And thank you, Holly, for all that you've done, your vision, and, you know, it's only going to hopefully serve the community more in the future, so as more people are aware of it. But they had a nice presentation on the news this morning that I saw. So, thank you, Holly.
Okay. So at this time, consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Oh, so move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Item number nine, action items, public hearing. So we're going to do a few of these. A public hearing, consideration of order 2021.040, approving annexation to the rural fire district.
Yes, Commissioners, you have, the first one before you is a petition to annex into the rural fire district number two. The fire district has approved the petition. The assessor's office and the clerks have certified that the petition is appropriate as, as Community Development confirmed that it's consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. Statute requires you to open and hold a public hearing should anybody care to provide any type of testimony. And thereafter, you can close the hearing, and staff has prepared an order for your consideration.
So this is a public hearing on the matter. So the first item is approving annexation to the rural fire district number two. The packet defines the parcels and signatures, and the packet is complete, is the confirmation also.
Yes, it is. Again, we've talked about this before. This is kind of an old vestige of old statute that they have you, the county commissioners as, as a public hearing authority for this. Really, this concerns the, the fire district and is specific to them, but because it does impact tax maps and taxation issues is why it comes before the county commissioners.
So is there any public testimony on this matter? Is anybody in Zoom or a phone call? Okay. So let's call the public hearing completed at this time. Is there a motion for consideration of this order?
I move approval of order 2021-040.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. At this time, item number 10, public hearing and consideration of order approving annexation to the Bend Park and Recreation District.
Yes, Commissioners, this is a petition, as you indicated, to annex into the Bend Park and Recreation District. The packet includes approval of the petition by the Park and Recreation District. The assessor's office and the clerk have certified the petition, and Community Development has reviewed it and indicated it's consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. As with the prior hearing, this would be an opportunity for the Board to open the hearing, receive any testimony or input, and then staff has prepared an order for your consideration.
Okay, so this is open hearing on public, public hearing consideration of order number Is there anybody to testify in this matter?
I'm not hearing anybody.
Okay, so seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a motion?
So move approving order number 2021-041, approving the annexation of the Bend Park and Recreation District.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. We've powered right through a few of those. Item number 11, public hearing, consideration surrendering jurisdiction of a portion of Knott Road to Campy Road and Stevens Road to the city of Bend.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. I'd like to share my screen here. Okay, so this morning, we are holding a public hearing regarding the jurisdictional surrender for portions of Knott Road to Campy Road and Stevens Road. Just a quick outline for this item. I'm going to provide some background information here, give the road department's recommendation on this matter. Then I'll ask the Board Chair to open the public hearing. When the public hearing's complete, then ask the Board to take up consideration of order number 2021-046. So background information, the revised joint management agreement regarding the area within the Bend Urban Growth Boundary, or JMA, between the city and county, requires a transfer of jurisdictional authority of all county road rights of way that are annexed by the city. And R S 373.270 provides the procedure for transferring jurisdiction over county roads within a city to that city. The basic process is the city makes a formal request to the county. Public hearing is held by the county governing body, and then the county governing body would adopt an order or resolution of jurisdictional surrender. So the city of Bend is recently annexed territory within the UGB associated with the two master plan developments. Those developments are the Easton and Stevens Ranch Developments. I'll pull up map to those here in just a moment. The annexed territory includes portions of the following county roads. So there's approximately quarter-mile segment of Knott Road, a very small segment of to Campy Road, 120-foot segment that, that comprises the, the southern leg of the roundabout at Knott Road to Campy Road and 15th Street. And then approximately half-mile segment of Stevens Road, associated with the Stevens Ranch Development. With the annexation ordinances adopted by the city, the city has also made request for jurisdictional transfer of these road segments. There we are, looking at a map of the Easton Development Annexation. So the, the area highlighted in blue there is the territory that was recently annexed, and the road segments highlighted in red there are the, are the road segments proposed for jurisdictional surrender. So just for frame of reference, this is down at the south end of the city of Bend. Again, right here is the intersection of Knott Road, 15th Street, and Campy Road. Then looking at the Stevens Ranch Annexation, so this is over on the east side of Bend. Our, our road department campus is right here just south of this. Again, area highlighted in blue is what has recently been annexed, and the road segment highlighted in red is the, what's proposed for jurisdictional surrender. Road Department put out a notice for this public hearing. We have not received any public comments regarding this matter. So our, with that, the road department recommends Board of County Commissioner adoption of order number 2021-046. With adoption of this order, the subject road segments will become city of Bend roads at midnight tonight. At this time, I'd request that the Board Chair open the public hearing, and then after public testimony has been given this morning, and subject to any testimony disputing the matter, I'd request that the Board Chair close the public hearing and that the Board consider adoption of order number 2021-046, completing these proceedings and surrendering jurisdiction of said road segments to the city of Bend. With that, I'll turn it back over to the Board Chair.
Great, thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for the consideration of this order number surrender, surrendering the, the discussed segments of road in the city of Bend. So being a public hearing, there's no one in the room on the matter. Is there anybody with a raised hand feature in Zoom?
No raised hand.
Or phone numbers that we don't recognize?
No phone numbers.
Okay, seeing none, we'll call the public hearing closed on this matter. So this has been appropriately published for their public meeting, and public hearing has been completed. Is there a motion or discussion on the matter?
I move approval of order number 2021-046, surrendering jurisdiction of portions of Knott Road to Campy Road and Stevens Road to the city of Bend.
I'll second the motion.
Very good. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So as of midnight tonight, they will go from county roads to city roads.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Cody, I, Cody, I did want to ask, is, is surrender a legal term, formal legal term that we have to use? It seems like a, I mean, transfer I get, like surrender seems, surrender seems a little dramatic.
It's, it's not my favorite term either, but it actually is the term that's used in statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question, though.
I hate to surrender.
Surrender?
Yeah.
Okay, item number 12, consideration of board signature document authorizing the purchase of pre-engineered building for Negas Transfer Station.
Morning, Chad Santola, interim director for Solid Waste. This, this action item is for approving the purchase of a pre-engineered metal building that will be constructed as part of the Negas Transfer Station improvements we're, we're doing this fiscal year. This is a little bit of a different approach than we took when we were constructing Knott Landfill. The, the purchase in, of the building that was used for the transportation, Knott Landfill, was included as part of the general contractor bids. As we were moving forward with the design for the Negas project, our, our engineering firm approached us with a suggestion that we consider purchasing the building ourselves for the project. It affords a number of efficiencies for us, one being that when we, when we prepare this, the bid documents, we have to make some general assumptions on some of the structural and foundation designs. And that kind of opens us up for potential change orders depending on which building vendor, the, the general contractor would, would select for the project. Pre-purchasing that, we get all the specific structural and engineering documents for it that we can include in the, the, the construction project bids for foundation. So it avoids a, a change orders associated with a varying of metal building vendors. The second efficiency is that we, we can use Sourcewell, which is a purchasing organization the county belongs to for purchasing the building. We actually did a bid for this project. I was unaware at the time that you could purchase a metal building through Sourcewell, and we got a single bid for the project. However, it was considered non-responsive because they cannot meet the, the bonding and insurance requirements. Building manufacturers typically don't do bonding and insurance. And that bid came in about $160,000 over the Sourcewell bid. So the direct purchase right off the top saves us $160,000 on, on procurement of the building. The other, the other cost savings is that we don't have any kind of markup with the general contractor. Virtual anything they purchase for a project, there's anywhere from five to 20% markup on, so we avoid that substantial markup with, with contractor. So we, we, when we were talking with the, the contractor that submitted a non-responsive bid, they mentioned to us that we can purchase these buildings through Sourcewell. So I did some research on that, and we reached out to Nucor, who's the vendor on Sourcewell's program, and they give us, gave us this cost proposal as before you today. So it, there, there's a lot of good advantages for us purchasing, purchasing the building directly. And the, the action today is to, to approve that purchase for the project.
Oh, I just, Chad, on the document summary at the last page, there's actually a transposition on the, the payment. It's supposed to, according to the middle of the document, according to the quote, it's supposed to be 27, ending in 27, and it ends in 72 on this. I don't know if it matters anywhere, but it's, it's just a bit of a transposition.
Okay, yeah, that was, I, I, I am not the best typist. My, my freshman teacher, Mrs. Roman, is rolling in her grave because of my, my poor typing. I apologize for that.
That's so sweet, you remember her name? She must have been incredibly influential in your career path.
She was a sweet lady. Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that, that legal counsel's wear that when they, when they look at the document.
At first, I thought it was on the front page, but then when I read the document in the middle, I went, no, no, it's just the, just the final page, it seems to be.
Yeah, it's, it's $1,399,127.
Twenty-seven.
Okay.
I think you caught me on that on a, on a previous...
You know, this is my job, is to read between the lines.
I should be a little bit more careful, especially when it comes to dollars and cents myself.
So we're talking $1,399,127, so that was about a $50 or so change in there, but good catch, Commissioner.
Yeah, it was like, anyway.
So buying this building stabilizes the engineering and the, the future of this. That's the big value that I'm seeing here. We're kind of locking down the, the size and the construction and the materials and all the variables associated with that building.
Correct.
Then the contractor can just take it.
Right. And before we, we finalize in terms of Nucor, that substantial document that's included with the, the agenda packet, we actually went over that line by, line by line with, with the building manufacturer and our design team to make sure we had everything correct on there.
This is a steel-structured building?
It's going to look similar to Knott Landfill. I had forwarded a, an architectural rendering. I don't think the colors are quite correct, but the architectural features are what we specified for the project. So it, I think it's a, it, it, it works well with some of the other commercial buildings that are in the area around Negas.
Well, so then, I'm just thinking sourcing, you know, the roofing or the siding or any of the beams, it's all going to be a package at this time, so we're...
Correct.
...going to be subject to escalating fees as we make this commitment also.
We're, we'll be locked in with that price. There, there are a CMU block wall similar to Negas where it's metal on the upper, excuse you, similar or not, where it's metal on the upper structure, but with a, a concrete block wall on the, on the lower. So that'll be part of the bid, bid documents here. That's not secured as part of this. It's strictly the, the metal structure and siding.
Cost of CMU and concrete specifically.
Right.
Great.
Chad, I, I really appreciated the, the diagrams, the, the visuals that, that you shared with us as well. It's, it's really neat to envision this building that's going to be the centerpiece of the Negas Transfer Station. And to see it moving along with this, with this order and, and purchase agreement.
It's, it's definitely going to be a, a substantial improvement for, for Negas and the, and the Redmond community. And our, I think I mentioned the staff board, our, our schedule right now looks like we'll be going out to bid in January for the, the construction project.
Great. So is there a motion?
I move approval of the attached quote and order document with Nucor Building Systems for the purchase of a pre-engineered metal building for the Negas Transfer Station improvements project in the amount of $1,399,127.
Seven, okay. So there's not an order specifically, though, is it?
The actual agreement has the correct number, the correct amount, so.
But I'm just referring, so an order was mentioned, but it's really a document number.
Yeah, I don't think this has a document number stamped on it yet.
No, there is a document number on the document summary form for it.
Yeah, it's not on the document, but, yeah, the summary form calls it out as document 2021-830.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
We'll have to make sure Sharon gets that stamped on there.
Yep, okay. So 2021-830.
830, I wrote it down.
Second on 2021-830.
There we go. So any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Working right through our agenda today, item number 13... Working right through our agenda today, item number 13, American Rescue Plan Funding Update. So this is a follow-on of the childcare discussion. I want to thank everybody for providing the input on this last week and bringing it back today. You know, one of the sets of minutes here that we approved today talked about this whole topic being laid out and saying, well, let's bring it back next week to make sure we're digesting this, so.
I wanted to ask, this was tentatively scheduled, this item was tentatively scheduled for 9:45, I see. There's a couple of folks associated with the proposals here, but Greg, do you think that there are other people coming who we should try to wait till 9:45 for?
My suggestion would be to, there's three subtopics on the agenda today, if we can talk about two and three, and then circle back to number one and revisit the childcare strategy from last week.
So yeah, we'll stay on this agenda item, thank you very much, Commissioner Chang, and we'll work through Affordable Housing Proposal Development Update and our ARPA funding requests, and then work our way back to the childcare discussion.
Okay, great. So item number two, Affordable Housing Proposal Development Update, I just want to let you all know that we formed a consortium similar to the childcare consortium of experts in the community on affordable housing, and we have our first meeting tomorrow. So I'll give you updates on that, but the thought there would be the same concept is to eventually at some point come back to the board of the proposal for consideration of using ARPA funds.
As a package?
As a package.
In that domain?
Yep, yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep. And then number three is, go ahead.
If I could just ask about that consortium, Greg, is there, is it just the people who put proposals in, or do you have other kind of, you know, sector experts involved as well?
Yeah, we, well, tomorrow's the first meeting again, but really, the idea there is to reach out to the experts in the community, whether they've put a proposal in or not. And the idea is to come back with the best possible ideas back to the board to make some of these funding decisions with.
Is someone from the city's Affordable Housing Committee involved in some way? Either staff or one of the committee members?
Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I can ask you about, more about that later, but you know, there's, you know, that is a, you know, a local government committee with dedicated staffing that's focused just on this specific question. I'm imagining that someone there could, you know, provide some useful perspective on this issue and, you know, maybe if a lot of the other members are people who are making proposals, it could even sort of play a more like neutral role in helping to frame it up and present it.
Yeah, I made a note, I will check on that, and I'll circle back and let you know.
Thanks, Greg.
So one of the things for affordable housing may be an opportunity to invest in, and I'm thinking of the infrastructure, water sewer roads, the cities, you know, at a high level, maybe there's a way to invest dollars or at least learn about the landscape of other federal investments that possible. So ARPA dollars is from the federal government, but there may be other funding streams. So, you know, having that full view of, you know, is there just a way to offset the long-term cost of utilities for future development also? So just as part of the mix.
Yeah, and that's where someone, you know, like Lynn McConnell from the city would be great to talk about the SDC component and, you know, could help us understand what all the other sources of financing are for these kinds of projects that need to all stack up and come together for something to happen.
It'd be a vibrant discussion.
Certainly will.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. So the third piece on today's agenda is just to review the running list, and as we normally do each time we do an update, I give you two lists. One is a list of those projects that we're working off in terms of funding. These are the projects that we've confirmed against the interim final rule that we believe are eligible. And we arrive at a lot of the eligibility conclusions from conversations back and forth with the proposers. It's not just simply a proposal is sent in, we actually talk through it to make sure that everybody understands, so. That's the first list. And then the second list is the list of all items that have been received, whether they're eligible, have not yet been determined, or are eligible. So you can get an order of magnitude of the scope of what's been asked. So as we've done in the past, this is an opportunity to talk about those, if there's any funding considerations that you want to make, or if there's more information you'd like us to circle back with and come back with. It's sort of wide open to what you'd like to do.
I have a question. In looking at this, I noticed that under small business and nonprofits, we have the Boys and Girls Club Bend asking for $619,464, and I really thought that needed to probably flip over to childcare. So we have a true picture of what we're asking for, and reading the project for the, you know, the operation over at the St. Charles Five Acres, they are going to be having a capital campaign. So perhaps that this money may help with that campaign or something, but I just thought, it seemed like it was more appropriate to be over with childcare.
So that's, thank you for bringing that up, that's a good point. And it is, we do have several cases in here where perhaps a provider or a requester appears like it should be in childcare and is maybe under a nonprofit for a business assistance. The Boys and Girls Club, though, this is a request that's going to be grouped in with the COCC evaluation of nonprofits and businesses that have been financially impacted by the pandemic, so either an increase in costs or a loss of revenue, which the Boys and Girls Club are requesting. So it has, it's independent of a childcare ask and a childcare slot expansion proposal. So they're two different.
I know, but it's just going to be, you know, if they have to do a huge capital campaign to finish up that project, and then we are possibly going to be giving them, you know, for their reimbursement, $619,000. It's just kind of, okay, we're going to be giving money over here, but it's actually perhaps going to help with their capital campaign. I mean, you can tie it together.
And when that proposal comes back from COCC, there'll be an opportunity to
Okay.
further evaluate and decide from there.
So, I'm sorry, not 100% clear. So is that going to come in through our business assistance package or separate from that?
So that will be the, that will be a business assistance and nonprofit assistance package from COIC, I should say. And that will be an opportunity for the board to decide how to proceed in terms of that funding. It'll just simply be a recommendation or an analysis of data within the county to the board that says, here's where the and the board will be able to decide from there.
So, yeah, so while with, while with our childcare investments, we are trying to think about how to expand the number of seats and the workforce for childcare moving forward, this is, you know, the other, this other request is retroactive, you know, the Boys and Girls Club is essentially just another business that by the pandemic and is trying to recover lost revenue.
Yeah, so essentially, it's another business, as you said, that got hard hit by the pandemic and also happens to be when it provides childcare.
Okay.
So we have that.
Something to keep in mind, but, you know, I do think of that as independent from our childcare discussion that we're having today.
We have raised hand feature, Anthony Poponi is on the Zoom call. Please introduce yourself, and so if you're in the room, you raise your hand and just so I can get context of who you are and what your statement might be.
Commissioners, thank you. My name's Anthony Poponi. I am the interim development director for the Boys and Girls Club of Bend. I was not involved as heavily as care, but I did put together the request to the commissioners that was just spoken about that I think would be pushed over to COIC about lost revenue during the pandemic.
So you agree with that path at this time?
The path being that there's
There's a $600,000 request plus, yeah, the kind of business
One that was put together in conjunction with OSU and St. Charles and would be a
So on the topic of ARPA funding requests, kind of, I'm going down the list, and I'd like to possibly pull one or two out or see if there's others that could be discussed and possibly agreed upon today. So I look at the broadband infrastructure, item number 24, right at the, kind of the middle of the, and I did do my homework early, talked to a couple of companies, and also traced it back to the state Oregon broadband office, which brought it back to our central Oregon EDCO efforts, which brought it back to COIC. So I'm just letting the commissioners know, I kind of, we went up and down on this, and now this is the request that would be the one that would provide that current up-to-date broadband needs assessment, which is kind of the reference point for the future investments. It's a $300,000 ask, would we be supportive of approving that today is kind of my thought.
Is that going to be in the Infra grant? I mean, I realize that that bill has not been passed, but I kept hearing, I thought that broadband was going to be in that another six months or something to actually be able to do something, and I know time is money.
I think this lays out the plan of where the investments could or should go, so this is a pre-work to that.
I know we've had support from Sun River.
Yeah, the key reason that people are trying to do analysis and assessment right now is to tee themselves up to land the big implementation dollars when the infrastructure package, and, I mean, even without the infrastructure package, there's, from the state level and then from the federal level, there's just a ton more broadband infrastructure dollars available right now. So that's how I see these proposals, and I'm really supportive of a regional approach and a regional look. My question is, you know, and Greg can catch us up on this a little bit, so we got that proposal from Sun River back in the day, you know, a few months back, and there was rumblings of a similar one from Sisters. And then our first look was because of the available broadband speeds in those areas that they wouldn't be, that those weren't eligible projects. So we sort of pulled them out. But now, if we're talking about, now we've subsequently learned that, you know, those projects, those kinds of projects would be eligible, so I'd want to know whether, I'd want to know whether Sun River and Sisters' needs are integrated into this proposal before I just funded this one in a one-off kind of way.
Yeah, so that's a good question, and we had the conversation, I had the conversation with James Lewis and with Scott Acock, James Lewis from Sun River Homeowners Association and Scott Acock from COIC, and they're two different projects. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't dovetailing if this was the same work, we weren't overlapping, we could do it together, but they're two separate components. And Commissioner Chang, what you mentioned about the speed, the eligibility requirement under ARPA for speeds, uploads and downloads speeds, the, that would exclude the Sun River project from being eligible because they already are within those speeds. I've had the conversation with James Lewis about it, he understands, and so.
So they're still, they're still not eligible?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, I'm just would be supportive of that, you know, indirectly, as in this would be a region, it would be a set of properties that are served, we document it and say, okay, this is the number that we know that's there, and then it would still follow on to possible other future investments.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm 100% supportive of a regional look and analysis. I just wanted to, I was just trying to figure out whether the particular needs that people were expressing earlier on were in some way covered by this project.
Yep.
And it sounds like they are, so I would support moving forward on this. So I will move a $300,000 American Rescue Plan allocation to the Regional Broadband Needs Assessment and Action Plan.
I'll second the motion.
And as I say, for discussion, people that are in this arena can all plug into this, that's the value here, because we have private companies looking for the investment, there's possible future dollars coming, and there's specific community needs that can be put right on the table there for this, for this plan. So I'm very supportive also. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
One that I, I'm not sure if we're ready to move on today or whether it's, you know, it's for a near term.
Well, so I'd like, yeah, let's pull a few of these out for discussion amongst the three of us, because then we'll find out, you know, that's exactly what we need to do.
But, you know, the visit this morning from the folks who wanted to ask about a Tumalo sewer system reminded me that we have an outstanding proposal from Terabon that has been kind of chunked up into three pieces with sort of an initial, it's not a feasibility analysis, but there's an initial piece basically of work that needs to be done for the folks in Terabon to be able to form their wastewater district that they want to form. And I believe it was somewhere in the range of $200,000 or $300,000 at last look, and so I'd love to, if not at this meeting, because I don't think we have the information here, but I'd love to tee that one up to move it along. That first phase piece, because I expressed to the people in Terabon that I, for the construction phase, I'm really hopeful that they are going to be able to find other monies in addition to coming to ask for ARPA funds, but they need to get their district forum so that they can even seek other money, so would love to see them move that first phase forward as fast as possible.
So, yeah, Greg, you might be able to help us with that. Is that mature for investment at this time? And, because I think we're close, I agree, we're close. So, I mean, if we, if we can put direction to it very clearly today by funding it, obviously, but I don't know that we're there either.
I mean, according to our chart, they're asking for $2,050,000.
Yeah, but we've seen, in some of the work that Chris has done, I've seen it now broken into like three phases even. I believe there were three phases, and I think the first one was basically what needs to happen for them to form their wastewater district, which is the key to them being able to access these other funding sources.
How about we put it into a, you know, a pre-allocation bucket, and, because then the discussion can get landed, you know, in the near future.
Or we could do it next week. I mean, either way, we
I mean, so the Board of Commissioners is saying there's X amount that's available for this if we're ready to go. So then, by committing to a pre-allocation or a bucket, all of a sudden, then there's something to respond to. Yes, this $200,000 or whatever the number is can be utilized in this fashion in the near future, because that will get people engaged in the community, too.
Is Chris Dodi available?
Yeah, and if he's not, we can always queue this up for an information session next week or at the next available time.
I mean, if we are going to, if we are going to create a bucket, then, you know, just based on what we heard this morning, I would want there to be enough money in the bucket for a Tumalo project as well.
Oh, yeah, I was going to go there, too. So it was mentioned that there is some money being spent, just some engineering analysis, like in the $10,000 range. So in the community, there's already people putting money in into their funding of just analysis. So it would be very valuable in that $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 range for Tumalo, because then they could really get serious about engineering and negotiation of what are we really talking about, you know, scoping out the community's needs and investment, but also if there's a way to help, you know.
I think the cost is a lot more than that. Didn't we spend like over $100,000 or something for Terabon study, the initial study? It was, yeah, it was up there. $30,000 isn't going to touch it, so.
Also, as I say, I did go to a community meeting in Tumalo on this, and there's a discussion of, there's an existing system across the highway which could be expanded, so it may, and that's in place right now. So that's not the same as, you know, starting from nothing, that's something. And the decision would be, is there a way to adapt that system for expansion and growth and spread it out? Or do they need to go to a whole new system? So that's kind of the question, and so it's, it's a different scenario. But just a number.
Is there a wastewater district on the other side of the highway then? Or is that someone's like individual?
It's like a homeowners association, it's in a urban unincorporated community, so there's the authorization there's the authorization to have a sewer district. And the, the, the development has, you know, been authorized by having that system. So, but it's only for a small footprint of the Tumalo plat, you know, it's just the edge of the plat. So the discussion is, would that system be able to grow to the rest of the area? So it's a smaller number, but it's a possibility for discussion. So, yeah, well, I mean, we're all, it sounds like we're all leaning into it. We don't have enough to kind of commit to numbers today.
I mean, if you wanted to, to make a, make a bucket and, and pre-allocate some funds to it, I would, I would suggest maybe $500,000.
Which would be the next planning and engineering and kind of the dreaming phase for both of them?
Yeah.
Hopefully, that would cover it. I remember when we first brought back Terabon, you know, the studies had been done two times before, and everyone was rather questioning at that moment. But today is a different day, and I think we realized that we better keep our water clean.
Okay. So let's go with that. The intention for ARPA dollars for the Board of Commissioners is $500,000, which will start the conversation. Because, so that's not landed specifically. But at least it allows people to say, okay, this is how I could use those dollars. Chris Dodi is available. Chris, I don't know that you've heard our discussion. We're talking about Tumalo and Terabon specifically, and wastewater in both of those communities. And we're just toying with the fact of, is it a good time to allocate a bucket, you know, a kind of not specific commitment at this time, but that amount for idea generation and community engagement in both of those communities?
And, and Chris, I was trying to remember in the, the phasing for, the phasing for the Terabon project right now, how much that first phase was that basically got them to district formation and, and exploring other funding sources?
Yeah. Thank you. And I apologize, board. I was not tied into this meeting. So I'm, I'm just picking up as you're telling me what's happening. To answer your question, Commissioner, the Phase 1 is $300,000. Of that, $50,000 is intended to serve as, as kind of seed money to help hire legal counsel and facilitate the sanitary district formation. $200,000 was for preliminary engineering to kind of further the, the design, most notably in advance of needing to incorporate that into the ODOT plans as those streets are being rebuilt. Another $50,000 to pursue a grant funding through, you know, the other more typical sources. So, and to date, we have spent $100,000 in Terabon on the feasibility study. So if the question is, you know, in, in terms of thinking about Tumalo and, and potential to kind of recreate what we've done in Terabon, we'd be looking at a feasibility study, a district formation component, probably about that $50,000 amount. And then, you know, maybe that $50,000 amount also for pursuing grant funding for that.
So 300 and 200, which gets back to the five that was just mentioned. Okay. So, yeah, let's, let's call that a bucket.
Or do we want to move on Phase 1 right now?
Well, and that's fine, too.
No, I think we definitely should. The people of Terabon have, well, especially commercially, it's been incredibly impacted. So
So 500,000, 200 and 300, is that what, how would we refer to it as?
I
I think the 200 was a subset of the 300.
What I'm referring
You're talking about 200 for Tumalo?
200 for Tumalo as a, as a pool, well, as an application area for the topics discussed, because they're not here to respond to that. But, I mean, it's showing support for, let's proceed.
Maybe, maybe a, maybe a pre-allocation for Tumalo. But Chris, if you, if you believe that we're ready to move forward on Phase 1 right now, I, for, for Terabon, I, I'd be prepared to make that allocation now. And the, the, the thought process, I don't know when you came in, but was, for, for these folks to be able to chase other money for implementation, they need to get that district formed as soon as possible. So that, that's part of my interest in, in moving Phase 1 along as fast as possible, is just enabling them to pursue other funds so that maybe for the implementation stage, they don't have to ask us for so much.
So $300,000 allocation for Terabon sewer efforts.
Yeah, yes. Answer your question, Commissioner Chang. Yeah, we're, I think we're ready. We're at that point with the, the advisory group, with the consultant firm, with the feasibility study, to, to take that, that next step.
So I actually think perhaps we should, if you're saying that Tumalo doesn't need as much, I think we should move the $300,000 for the Terabon first phase today. I think that's incredibly important for that, that community.
Was that a motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Good discussion. See, as I say, we don't get to do this among the three of us as much. We do analyze at all different angles, but now this is our public board meeting.
So, so Commissioner, just for clarification, that would be a $300,000 approval for the Terabon Phase 1 project with the balance of the $2.05 million to reside in the outstanding request? Is that what we're saying?
You could leave that in the, in the outstanding
So we'll move 300,000 from outstanding to approved.
Please do.
And it would be great if through the formation of this district, that, if that number could come down. But, you know, from, from speaking with Chris, I also understand that, that, that there's some very time-sensitive components of that $2 million.
So then, let's talk a little bit about, so who's the entity? So if there's a $300,000 checkbook for this, who's spending the money? Because that's the trick here. You know, we're trying to get a community to have a board who is an entity who can spend the money. But at this time, it's Deschutes County doing it on behalf of the community. Because Tumalo is going to be in that same spot. You know, I mean, we just saw very engaged citizens, but there's no entity there specifically that can receive the dollars or, or write a check out of a checkbook.
Until their district is formed, I mean, I don't see who you would give the money to, to administer it besides keeping it in, in-house and giving, giving Chris another checkbook.
Well, I mean, let's acknowledge that, you know. So our county administrator is in the room with us, and our road director is the one that just, you know, was pre-authorized with the checkbook. But is that even the, the right, you know, load or balance of duties? That's, I'm just acknowledging that. Yeah. So we don't need to take that anymore more today. Let's just leave it there. So
We'll figure it out.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris.
You bet.
So then, we did not approve 200,000 for Tumalo at this moment? I mean, knowing that Terabon's plan cost $100,000 and it
It would be great. I mean, it sounds like they're going to follow off with Chris and, and
Right. I think we need to hear
You're about the formula for, for Terabon. It'd be great to, it'd be great for them to, to come up with a, you know, a little bit more, more than back-of-the-envelope kind of strategy for how they're moving forward.
I would appreciate hearing more of what they, what they're hearing their costs are going to be.
Well, as I say, so there was a community meeting, you know, some of the players that were in the room were at that meeting, a few more were there also. I attended, and this was it. They came in during public testimony, citizen input, to say, we want to get started. So it just, it did start today, kind of the official realm.
And, and Chris, when, when members of, of the community from Tumalo came in this morning during citizen input and essentially asked for a partnership from the county, I, I outed you, and I told them what you had done for, for Terabon. And, and so I, they may be contacting you to ask for similar help. And
Okay, yeah.
Nick will be in the, in the mix on mediating that.
Okay. Thank you. I think.
Oh, you mean it. You mean it.
Thank you.
Very good. So page one again, item number 41, 1017 Project is another one that jumps out at me that is just a, kind of a line item that we can discuss. So let's see if we're, we could get somewhere on this. So 1017 is an effort of kind of our cattle industry and community members that take whole animals, grind them up for one-pound packages, and it's a direct allocation to the, the food banks around, and it's a tri-county area, but the ones in Deschutes County very much, you know, are provided with, you know, hundreds of pounds of, of prepared USDA-certified beef. And there is a $50,000 request here. And I did speak to the leadership and say, any amount is going to be valuable there. So I'm just thinking, is there a way to, you know, pick this one off today also?
Especially considering what beef prices are going to be doing, or have already done. Not that it's going to the, the ranchers, but, yeah, the price that you and I are paying in the market are out of, out of sight. So I would move, I would make an emotion to spend the, allocate the 50,000 for the 117 project.
Have we seen a write-up on this project?
Yeah, there's, there's paperwork that came through. And as, as I say, I'm just picking things off today that I've learned about and I know about. I mean, this is good for us to communicate. That's why the three of us don't do this as much.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I feel like I saw the regional broadband assessment write-up, and I saw the, the, the Terabon wastewater write-up. I, I have to admit, I don't remember being able to read through this one, and I, I'd like to hold.
That's fine. Do, yeah, Greg can help us with that. You know, make sure we have the same information.
So I can make sure you get a copy of that as well. And I also spoke with the leadership for 1017, the 1017 project to make sure I understood it. And essentially what it is, there was an increase in demand due to the pandemic for protein. And so this allows them to purchase more beef so that they can in turn raise it and, either purchase it or raise it themselves, and then donate it to these food banks.
And there's another avenue here, is this is local beef, local production, local slaughtering and packaging, too. So, I mean, it's really, it kind of helps that, you know, the, the whole local system opposed to the national meatpacking is what I'm referring to.
So there's a, there's a, a meat processing component of this project, or it's just about kind of
Well, it starts with the whole animal.
It's about purchasing and, and distribution?
Oh, no, it's, it's the whole animal going to USDA-certified in central Oregon, and it's Butcher Boys in Primeville, where they have a standing slot. So it's not even in Deschutes County. But if we had USDA-certified, I bet we would be able to utilize them. But it's whole animal going to that and coming out of that system. So it's that local. That's another aspect that's really exciting.
Okay. But, but we're, the, we've had past discussions about, you know, meat processing capacity, you know?
That's, yeah, that's it.
And this is not, this is not kind of building our meat processing capacity, like it's not opening up another facility. It's, this is, this is about the throughput through a, a, an existing meat processing facility that is intended for food security for, for people who are nutritionally challenged.
But it also empowers that local system to be a little bit more robust for, because it's coming. The Department of Agriculture is talking about the state meat inspection program, and there's going to be dollars coming through the legislature. There's a pool of funds to be invested in capital. So it's either going to help expand an existing facility or start a new facility in the next year or two. So as I say, that's the, the back end of this, is if we, if we have local animals, local process, local distribution, which they've been doing, it'll, it'll help.
I, I think this is incredibly important. If you're looking at inflation on beef, isn't it like 20% or something? It's, and it's only, inflation is not expected to turn around any moment soon. So I just feel like anything we can help with local and keep it local, think of all the costs you save. So, yes. And protein is important.
This sounds a little bit, early on in this process, I floated the idea of kind of telling local produce growers, you know, hey, we're going to allocate a certain amount of money to, a purchase product from you to, to get to people who need food assistance. And there, my impression was that there wasn't support for that kind of an approach early on. And if we're going to do that in, if we're going to do that for, for livestock, I would like to, to offer that same kind of opportunity to local produce growers. So that would be the other reason why I, I would want to read up more on this, think about it some more, and then also just ask, ask the two of you whether, whether you're open to that kind of a concept in the realm of, of, you know, vegetable growing as well.
Well, we just gave a grant, remember, the other day for seed to table? Maybe we need to tell them to apply for ARPA funds, too, the Sisters program. You know, I think what they do, the amount of output they have on their small acreage is unbelievable. So, you know, and they are a nonprofit.
Yeah. Then, just like we're doing childcare and housing, maybe there's a food component to the, you know.
We could, you know, you could do this, for example, you know, if we want a, a nonprofit intermediary, we could do it through the High Desert Food and Farm Alliance. And they're, they're tapped into, you know, 15 or 20 vegetable producers. And, you know, it's not, you know, we don't know that every single one of them would want to, would want to participate in such a program. But, but to, to make it available, I think, would be a great thing.
Yeah. So there, yeah, this is a point in time where we get to discuss this amongst ourselves, and that's a good point, you know, are there other opportunities down this? And are we building a system, though, too? You know, so, yeah. As I say, I, I'm excited because of the infrastructure of the protein and butchering as the other backfill to this. So, and I'm, nothing against anybody that has land and growing vegetables, but if we're subsidizing, you know, the, the market and that bill, yeah, I don't know. I mean, there's different ways to learn.
It's not building the, it's not building the infrastructure for
Yeah.
growing produce as well. I mean, clearing fields, building, you know, hoop houses or greenhouses, infrastructure that will expand the capacity, the production capacity. Because, you know, part of the issue, it's this chicken-and-egg thing of, if you don't have enough production, then you can't hit certain kinds of markets. And if you can't offer, and, and, you know, to, to, to expand your production capacity, you need to have that, that market demand to, so
Great discussion. Yeah. So let's, let's take it from there. Let's, it sounds like there may be another kind of a food
Maybe next week.
Food powwow on this.
Okay.
Good. Well, see, as I say, we need to talk amongst ourselves about this.
Craig, I do have a question on number 59, COVID testing through Dr. Young. We had approved 15,000, and I actually spoke with Dr. Young maybe about three weeks ago. I know she is no longer doing that. Have we, has all that 15,000 been spent?
So that was the balance of her contract that wasn't funded by CARES.
Okay.
I can't tell you off the top of my head how much of the 15 was spent, but
Okay.
We know that we cleared that contract and fully funded that.
All right. Well, just wanted to let you know about that.
Just so you know, at some point, we'll add information about how, how the spending is going on this. We just haven't really done a lot of actual spending yet, but that'll be a part of this in the future. So you'll know where each one of these allocations sit in terms of spending.
So I asked early on
Back on the 1017 project, Commissioner Chang, I will, I'll send all three of you, just as a reminder, the write-up that came from Holly McLean. And then, what would you like to do after that?
Great.
Is that, is that it?
I'd like to review that, and then if there is sort of an analogous proposal to be invited on the, on the produce end, I'd like to, I'd like to see that. I'd like to do some outreach on that.
Okay. So is this, is this an item for the next ARPA discussion, then, would be the 1017 project? Do we want to specifically call that out?
Well, I made a motion today. It hadn't been second. It has not been second.
Okay, gotcha.
But, and I'm supportive of, you know, bringing, because, I mean, there, yeah, I've been through this a few times, too, because it's a cold storage, warehousing, distribution, a lot of small players being able to bring products to one location, because it's hard to support a restaurant or other commercial avenues if there's a very intermittent supply. So I understand there's a whole big discussion there.
Yeah. If we could, if we could hold this at least till next week,
Oh, yeah.
I have a chance to read it.
Yeah, no, that's
I'd be, I'd be comfortable voting on the 1017 project then, and, and possibly inviting another kind of produce-oriented proposal
Yep.
after that.
So we're getting there. Is there anything else to be pulled off?
Yeah. I, I mean, you know, so I had asked a little earlier, like, hey, can we wait for our childcare panelists to, to arrive? And now I actually, now that there's so many folks here, I'm wondering if
Time to get to it.
If we, if we have, if we do have additional pieces, we want to pick off
Let's go afterwards. That's fine.
whether we could, whether we could hold those till later and, and then come back
We had three parts to ARPA discussion today. We worked through the second one, and we were discussing the third item. So back to the first part of this is expanded high-quality childcare, childcare in Deschutes County. Thank you very much, everybody, for joining us and, uh, attending our discussion on other items.
Okay. So Commissioners, just a brief background, last week on Wednesday, we met to bring to you the proposal for addressing the childcare challenges we have in the community, in the county. And ideally, that was a broad approach with our regional experts that came and said, basically, here's, here's a couple of, here's a short-term, some short-term options in terms of increasing the number of slots in the community, and also some long-term initiatives that we could use some of this ARPA funding for to build more capacity down the road, down the next five, 10, 15 years. down the road, down the next five, 10, 15 years. So at that meeting, you had several questions, which the team went back and did some research and provided a follow-up document for you. And I think that was sent, that was sent to you yesterday. Everybody is back here and on Zoom. I'm going to turn it over to Kelly Sparks and the rest of the team of experts to go over those questions that we had that they gave back to you and then answer any other questions you might have.
Great. Thank you, Kelly, for joining us. I'm excited about, you know, the big picture here. This is, this is transformational. And I, you know, and this is what was discussed last week. Last week, we were just running out of time to really digest it. I've been able to do some homework since. So one of the first questions is, who's the, who's the entity? Who's writing checks? As in, the county's going to write a check to somebody? Somebody's going to write a check to, you know, each staff person or, you know, the ownership of the building? So some of that business case, if you could help us with that.
Yes, absolutely. I think there's multiple owners in this case. So we come together, as you can see, we're a passionate group of community leaders in this childcare and early learning space. I think there's multiple owners. I think for some of the workforce program, we have Karen Prow, who is online with, with Neighbor Impact CCR. So that, for part of the workforce program, it would be there. I think OSU Cascades for the built environment of little kids, as well as a workforce program there. I think that we have COCC, the SBDC, for the program for the Business Accelerator. I think, I'm going off the top of my head here. So I, we also have Mountain Star for their relief nursery, additional infrastructure for the relief nursery. We have Re Village for expanded cooperative childcare model. And we have for the centralized pool of funding, that would also be to Neighbor Impact Childcare Resources Group. So I think, did I miss anyone in that?
Boys and Girls Club?
And then Boys and Girls Club. I think that theirs is matching funding that will be coming in. So I think that we could manage that as one program collaboratively between St. Charles, OSU Cascades, and Boys and Girls Club to make sure that we meet the overall program outcomes of that in a collaborative way.
Great. So kind of going down the path of the building at the campus at OSU Cascades. So who's going to buy that building? Who's going to own that building?
Yes. So OSU Cascades, we will offer the land. And that will be, it's already a site that's already included in our master plan allocation for the site. We will purchase the modular building. We will manage the construction contracts, installation, and operations of that future center.
So that'll be a long-term asset of OSU Cascades. The building on the land will be OSU Cascades' ownership.
Yes.
So, yes, when you say offer, they're going to continue to own it? And, and, you know, you said the buildings will last up to 20 years. So how will we know that that actually will be kept for 20 years?
I'm happy to, we can work that through and however you want to write the grant application. It will be specifically designed for childcare and early learning, so there would not be an intended other alternative use. It would be a modular structure for which we will do the floor print as well as the outdoor space, space and dedicate it to that use. So I'm happy to work through details to make sure that the county has assurance that that is the current and future use for that structure.
Because I just thought it was really outstanding. You said the building should last for 20 years. But, you know, what in 15, they look kind of dingy compared to the rest of the neighborhood and, you know.
Yeah. So.
Yeah. And we've spent millions of dollars building them.
Yeah, of course. I would look at it this way, that it's just as important for us that that structure be maintained as a part of the quality environment for the children as well as for the look and feel of the campus. So I'm happy to work in a way that could structure the, the agreement with the ARPA funds that meets the county's needs. We want it to last longer than 20 years.
Yeah.
We want it to be a year that's there in 50 years from now, if we put energy into the facilities and maintenance of the site. Both that one, and if there are future potential other modular building structures, whether through this funding at St. Charles or other locations across the state, we want to make sure that we're designing a modular structure that has longevity to it.
So I don't know if you can address the St. Charles issue, but they use the term offering too. So does that mean there's going to, it's their five acres. Does that mean that we are going to be able to have the buildings there? Is it going to be a short term, I mean, an annual lease for like a dollar a year for 20 years or something? So we know that, you know, with all this effort put into that spot, it's going to stay there?
Yeah, that's a great question. I was not able to connect this morning with St. Charles, but that's something that I think we would work through. We would work through either a master lease of the term of the land. The other thing that's nice about this modular structure is that it can be moved to an alternative parcel on that site. So we don't lose the use of the building. It's modular in that way. So I think that's something that we would want to structure to make sure that you as county commissioners have assurance that we're meeting both the current and future needs of this structure for childcare and early learning for Deschutes County. I, I am a little hesitant to speak on their behalf, but I, I believe their, their long-term intent has been communicated to me is for the use of this parcel for childcare.
I know. Five acres does seem like a lot of property. I mean, in a perfect world, it seems wonderful. But do we really need five acres? I mean, I would just hate to think we got it all situated and then they said, oh, my gosh, we need those two acres. You know, let's move everything over.
I agree that that would be an important point of clarification in the structure of this grant agreement, that we formalize that so that we have ongoing knowledge that the land will be used for that purpose.
Thank you, Kelly.
So who owns the building at St. Charles campus?
So I think that's something we can work through. It could be OSU Cascades and it could be St. Charles. From our standpoint, we are committed to operating the center as a little kits in collaboration with Central Oregon Community College. Either way, whoever has ownership of the building. So I think we would want to look at both tax implications as well as structural implications of that agreement with their, with their team. But I think it can go either way.
So then if I was going to be a childcare certified teacher working at that facility, who do I get a paycheck from? So these are just the basics.
Right now, they would get a paycheck from OSU Cascades. So we will stand this up as an OSU Cascades operated facility under the Little Kits brand name. And they become, actually, most childcare workers will become SEIU represented employees in that center.
At St. Charles campus also?
Yes. Employees, wherever they work for OSU in the early childhood space, that's the, how it would roll out.
So then is this being built out to be kind of a optimal scale? Because I worry about then, you know, the cost of childcare there. And we all do, obviously. That's the key to this. But, you know, 100 kids maximum or something like that at these facilities, you know, the teacher to child ratio. And, you know, I just, I want to think down the path of, are we setting a different rate for public and private childcare? You know, that's one of the concepts I could, can figure out.
Yeah, that's a terrific question. So what we will do is we will design the classroom space to maximize the ratios in the classroom. So that's part of, that's, that's part of the first Little Kits project. So the, so an infant room, for example, will be smaller than a pre-K classroom, so that we can have our larger kiddos have the space and area for gross motor skills, whereas our infants may need less space for that pre-crawling in particular. So we'll maximize that to the ratios that Early Learning Division has to maximize the number of kiddos in that space. I think I should also point out, the St. Charles location would also include extended hours into the evening as well as potentially weekend care. So while the, at any one point in time, it's about 100 kiddos in that space, the actual number of families and children served will be greater because they'll have extended, so there'll be, you know, different schedules. So we can accommodate both people in the healthcare industry and potentially industries like manufacturing where there may be split shifts or alternative working hours where we're not currently meeting the childcare needs in the region. So that's also the intent of the St. Charles location.
So Kelly, reading what we received last week, that's what I was wondering about. It said that the second facility will eventually become a West Side branch of the Boys and Girls Club, providing after-school, evening and summer enrichment. Okay, but is it still going to be childcare during the day, too?
So.
I mean, when, once it gets built, which is after they get their, you know, campaign filled?
That, Beth Bogans is not here today from Boys and Girls Club, but I think we would work to maximize the use of that center for, for all of the uses. So the intent is to partner on that. So in the first center, we will have a pre-K, drop-in K during the day, and an after-care program in the afternoon. That same space being used for summer enrichment in the early years while Boys and Girls Club is going through their capital campaign. Then the second center will move that after-care out of the first center into the Boys and Girls Club second facility. And then we'll look at both summer enrichment, all-day care for, for elementary-aged children, as well as how we maximize the use of that facility for other care.
I know, because, you know, childcare is needed, you know, all times. I mean, people work in restaurants at night and things and, you know, definitely need help. So.
The difficulty with space sometimes is that for a third to fifth grader, the materials in the classroom and even the furniture height and size, even toilet size, is different than that for a three to five-year-old. So that will be the trick, is how do we create a maximum flexibility, but also meet the developmental needs of the children and at the ages that they're at in each of those spaces?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
So COCC, is that building going to be owned by COCC or OSU Cascades?
A third facility, if we were able to extend a COCC, ideally, that would be owned by COCC. And we would work in collaboration to operate it under Little Kits.
So then a paycheck for an employee would come from OSU Cascades program still?
From Little Kits, yep.
Yeah, see, that's just what I'm trying to get clear. Yeah. So Little Kits is the business that writes the paychecks.
Yep.
Which is an entity of OSU Cascades.
Which we need to turn into its own entity. Right now, it's just OSU Cascades with a brand on it. At some point, we need to talk about creating that into a separate legal entity.
Yeah. So as I say, that, that's kind of where my brain goes. Okay, who's going to be writing the paychecks? And what is it going to look like 10 and 20 years from now?
We have stepped up to take that risk, to move this forward as quickly as possible to operate it and to, to write those paychecks.
Great. Any other questions?
I, I have another one. I noticed one of the programs is doing only six in the first year and then 24, 24.
Workforce Development Program?
Right.
Yeah. So that is based on the number, that's first of all, ramping up. The goal would be six to 12 in the first year. So it depends on how many internship sites could be located in the first year. So thinking about that as between now and January 1 would be the goal, the start date for that. So we have three classrooms at OSU Cascades in the current Little Beavs program that we are operating this year, pre, before Little Kits. Or can we find additional internship sites in the community? So we've estimated that we think we could recruit six people into the program this year realistically.
You're talking January 1st?
Yes.
2022.
2022 would be the, the goal start date. If we can do more than that, then we will find a way to do more than that. But I wanted to be very realistic in what, who and how many we could recruit into a program at this point in time.
I know. I talked to, I texted with Ken this morning, and their program, they were hoping to have 15, has 10. Two of the people that were in it are going to do it in January. So I mean, I realize that's life. And, you know, when the word gets out there that we're offering this for the community, I'm, you know, I'm really hoping that we have more people that sign up.
That's the goal. And then to increase that marketing time and then started align it with the beginning of an academic year. So whether they're taking classes at COCC, whether they're taking professional development courses offered by Neighbor Impact, or whether they're taking four-year classes at OSU Cascades, really offering them those three different pathways, and then the internship coordination and support time.
I know. Last week when we discussed this, we actually were saying, if we did two years for the Fast Track and then the sustainable, it was also on a three-year program, I, I would hope that after like a year and a half, we would know. And, you know, the programs, if they're really successful, could come back to the county. But I would feel more comfortable in funding for two years for those two. I just think, okay, we, we need, we need to have feedback. We need to know that this is, this is actually working. You know, we don't have 30 people that are going through the program and then they're all going, oh, my gosh, I don't want to do this. You know, I, I know it's, it's, you lose some, but it's a, we're putting in, you know, we're really trying to get rid of the desert. So I would feel more comfortable in doing two years for those two. And then we're talking, it's about 165, it's about, what is it, $650,000 that we could cut back on and then, you know, just kind of know that, okay, if the program's working, let's, you know, maybe we need to put more money in it, because we definitely need to get rid of our desert.
My proposal last week was actually to, to do Fast Track and Little Kits internship for, for just two years as opposed to three years. And that would actually save us over 950,000. Or it would reduce the, the requests in front of us by close to $1 million.
But see, the Little Kits, the problem with that is like what Kelly was just saying, we've only got six in the first year, and then we've got 24, 24. So I really hated to, you know, with six, that, I know it's, Kelly, it's just, it's what, two months away? So I can understand that it's going to be really hard to build that up to 24, 24. That's why I, I thought the other two, you know, I want to be really fair to everybody, but I just know that we're not talking very much time.
The, the one other piece to think about was that those two, Fast Track and Little Kits, were proposed with the assumption that the childcare, the recipients of the workforce, the childcare facilities that will be using these little, these Little Kits interns or the people who come through Fast Track, would prefer to pay zero for, you know, for those, those people in their, you know, the 12-week chunk that they're there, or, you know, the longer Little Kits internship, which I think by year three, we should see, you know, if these, if these programs have demonstrated that they can produce quality workforce that these childcare providers need, I do think that we will see that they, that they would be willing to co-invest. So I, I, I definitely appreciate the, the desire to, you know, support programs that take a little while to ramp up. But I, I do think that by year three, there should be, there should be some more willingness to cost share from the facilities that are using the, the interns or the, the, the workforce that's produced by Fast Track. And, and so I guess maybe if we want to keep year three for, for Little Kits, maybe we, we do a reduced allocation at that time or something like that?
Okay. So we're looking at it, it's like a million-dollar ask from us. So let's say we did two-thirds of it. Because the last year is actually their most expensive ask for us. It's 423,000. So if we did two-year, you know, okay, so they're asking for a million, let's do 667,000. And, and then maybe, Kelly, you'll be able to move some people into the six. I appreciate people being conservative, but perhaps you'll be able to come up with some more people that participate. Would that be appropriate?
I, I mean, kind of to go, go with your principle of, of we want to give them some support in year three so that they're able to, you know, really stand this program up, then maybe a little more than two-thirds. I mean, you, the, I would say, give the year one and year two allocation and then, you know, something for year three. So that might be, I don't know, maybe more like seven, 750.
750 total? I think that's probably fair, because I, I know when you see what's happening out there with, you know, with all the jobs that have help wanted signs on them, 750 seems appropriate. That, that's, at least, Kelly, you know that it's out there. And.
So that would trim the, the Little Kits internship request by seven, by 250.
Right.
And the Fast Track, if we left, if we dropped year three at, for, for now, that would trim that down another.
Fast Track, that's 540,000 that it trims off of that one. And then the sustainability, it trims off 116,550. And we're still, I believe, it's still allocating like, almost like 18, 17% of the ARPA funds to childcare. So I think that's really, hey, gosh, let's hope this really can make a difference for our community. I know, we hear it nationwide. What was it? There was a story from Montana on the news, I think. I saw it, I don't know, this week maybe. And it's just, it's everywhere. So, you know, let's, let's see if this is really a model for the nation.
Like I said last week, I think this is, this is kind of like a moonshot for our, for our community. And, you know, big picture. and, you know, big picture, yeah, as the baby boomers retire, the percentage of our population that is worker age is shrinking and shrinking. And if we're not providing childcare, if there's not adequate affordable housing in our community, we're taking that already shrinking proportion of working-age people and shrinking it even more and depriving our economy of the people it needs to run it. So this, for me, is not just important to all those families out there, but it's also, you know, fundamentally important for our regional economy.
So if I haven't made a mistake, if we do this, according to my calculation, $6.6,768,450, that's 17.8% of the ARPA funding.
I think that's...
I'd go like, where did Greg go? Oh, that's right, he's in the back of the room.
Just wanted to see.
I know, Greg, you need to check my numbers.
Well, so I appreciate, I mean, that was really wonderful to be able to work through that just now. So, I mean, it's close to what you were proposing last week, and she's got the numbers and how it's...
Well, I just think we need to clarify with St. Charles offering, it's got to be on the dotted line somewhere, that it's actually a long-term lease for the program, you know, truly. And hopefully, it will help with their workforce situation, that people will have childcare really conveniently available. And for the East Side, too, if Boys and Girls Club with their capital campaign can get that second, you know, Little Kits program going, the modular unit, that's, it's really what our community needs. And there's a lot of growth over there, so...
So do you have kind of a number now from...
I do, I hope it's really right, but I did do, I did do calculations on my real calculator. So I propose, this includes the million that we have already allocated, is it not already in here? It's listed, the Bend West, the Little Kits West, which we have approved. Including that million, it is $6,768,450 for childcare in Deschutes County. And that includes the half million for their capacity fund, and includes $125,000 for the Business Accelerator Program at COCC. There's a lot of really wonderful programs in here. Re Village, I love what they do, $350 a month, that includes their allocation of $350,000. We could have some amazing things. And we actually had a childcare in Lapine that approached us for grant funding a couple days ago, and hoping, you know, to do for their fund to help parents that can't afford. And hopefully, you know, they can access more of this, this half a million dollars, because they really had a great preschool program. It was really exciting to read about it.
Do you want to list out the specific allocations for each line, since you sort of started along that pathway?
Okay, so the accelerator, well, I don't have, I have them subtracted at the bottom. The accelerator stays at the $125,000. The childcare sustainability is $400,000 less $116,550, because that was the third year.
That's $284.
Okay, and then we have the Fast Track, which was $1,006,000 originally, and less $540,000, because that was the third year. And then we have Little Kits, which is going to be less $250,000, so that will be $750,000. And then the other numbers all stay the same per our capital allocations. Little Kits, $1 million. Little Kits, St. Charles, with that, is $2.1 million. And then we have Mountain Star for Lapine and Redmond at $600,000. We have the Re Village, Sisters Bend and Redmond at $350,000. The capacity fund is a half a million. So that is everything on the, our proposal for today.
Just a question of clarification. So the third year that we, that you just, Commissioner Adair deducted, does that go into, would that go into a, do we want to hold that in a reserve for that third year, that discussion later? Or how do you want to handle that?
Gosh, you know, we've got to hope that this really does pick things up to, you know what, maybe we should just hold it for next year, and then we'll know in a year where we're really at. So I would think that that might not be a problem. But it's, what is it, it's, gosh, it's almost $1 million.
So we'll have a reserve line for workforce development?
Yeah, it's like, what, $900,000 or something?
And Greg, would that be allocated?
Yes.
Or would that be kind of an outstanding request?
A contingency?
Well, that would be your decision, but what I'm hearing here is that it would end up being an allocation that's, or a reserve that's unallocated. So it would be, it would show as committed, you just haven't made specific commitments yet.
Okay.
It's $906,000, so, yeah. That's a lot.
So there's other big funding opportunities at the state level, too. So, I mean, by starting this project, by committing to this project, there could be a whole lot of things evolve in the next 12 months, which will sure give us guidance about, you know, what do we need to backfill or fund because there's a reason? Or it's going so well, we, well, let's go reallocate it to something else?
I mean, I could, I'd also like to build into this, that the way we're allocating these funds, that the recipients have some flexibility. So for Fast Track, if you get two years of funding, and by next year, you're saying, well, actually, the people receiving these, these workers in, you know, in year two are willing to pay 25%, and you can save that 25%, you could use that in the third year. I mean, I'd be happy to provide that kind of flexibility as well.
So in some of the conversations we've had, one of the things we've talked about is a periodic checkback with the board, just to let you know where things are going, how we're doing some outcomes that have been achieved, and maybe there's some pivot points along the way that we learn about that we just don't know today, that we'll learn about tomorrow, that will, that could possibly do exactly as you're saying, is, you know, maybe we can redirect those funds for a better return.
I do want to recognize at this moment in time, I was reading the report from '19, and the fact that in Bend, 33% of, this is a '19 report, were actually family childcare providers, 33% in Bend, and it was 41%. Now, this was pre-COVID, so, you know, what are those, you know, how many of those people have had to fall away? And I'm sure a lot of them have. But maybe that's another vision for the community, is to actually get the family healthcare providers with all their training. You know, I would hope that it can happen. So we're going to have, what, a lot of teachers, what, 333 teachers or something? That we're adding to our workforce?
The goal, that is absolutely the goal.
I'm forgetting whether I seconded yet.
Yeah, so let's finish the business case. So Greg, are you clear on the numbers as Commissioner Adair shared them? And we just talked about having an unallocated portion or allocated uncommitted portion and a discussion in a year or so. So, and this will be newsworthy no matter what. So if we're clear, do you want to make a motion as discussed? I guess we can keep it there. Greg will have the final numbers.
Okay, I move. We allocate $6.768,450 for childcare, with a contingency of $906,550.
There you go.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? A lot of great comments made during this process. I want to thank everybody in the room that's here to advocate for this. And Kelly, thanks for answering our questions this morning. We're going to vote first. So Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Now we can cheer. Yay!
Thank you.
I wanted to say again, thank you all so much for framing this up for us in a way that we could see how to make strategic investments to turn the dial on childcare. And it'll be really exciting to see all of this unfold.
On behalf of all of us, we are deeply, deeply appreciative of the energy and effort that you're putting into childcare for our region, and we look forward to continuing to work together as a consortium to come back to you and report the good news of the workforce, as well as the childcare centers that we are going to build in collaboration. And I truly believe that this will be a game changer for Deschutes County for our workforce here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
So one question I had a note to myself, what's the vision at St. Charles, if somebody wants to kind of explain that? As in, you know, just the positive vision statement that we're going to be able to put in our heads about that? Is there any kind of lead person on that, or is that going to be you, Kelly?
It'll be Rebecca Berry, who is their Vice President of Human Resources.
Okay.
Unable to attend this morning, but absolutely, we'll make sure that you have her contact information. All of St. Charles is very excited and committed to this project.
So, and maybe even come back in the near term for that? Because it was mentioned last week, and it was mentioned this week, but, you know, it wasn't laid out. So I would love to see, you know, okay, this is it, this is what we're going to do. So that maybe is a short-term request, just to come in and explain that, because that is very impactful. We know OSU Cascade campus is being built out, and this is going to be a great addition to it. But, I mean, talk about healthcare in St. Charles, right in the middle of everything these days, that, I'd just love to learn more, just to show the excitement on that effort. So with that, thank you very much, everyone.
If I can make one other request? As we communicate this out, that this allocation out, one of the most important numbers I can, you know, the two really important numbers, I think, that will be important to convey to the community through the media are, you know, how many additional seats does this package produce? How many additional childcare workers does this package produce? And it would be great, you know, I'm picturing Whitney doing a press release right now, it'd be great to include those kinds of bottom-line numbers. So I don't know if we would be able to put that together just from looking at all the pieces, so if we could have some help with that, that would be great.
No, it's in here.
3:39, 5:30.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of there.
Even with the, even with cutting off, you know, shaving off year three, is that still...
Yeah, so good analysis can be done here and help promote it.
Maybe number-check us.
Yeah.
Yes, we're committed to doing that, and we will collaborate with Whitney Hale to communicate this externally.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Yeah, there we go. Show some excitement.
And so if anyone wants to know where they can donate for Christmas, the Bend Boys and Girls Club has got a capital campaign that's going to be important.
Okay, okay, great. Great, thank goodness. One song.
So still on this agenda item for one more moment, American Rescue Plan Funding Update, is there any other discussion? I'm glad that we talked about the, kind of the...
The 1017 and...
Food Project stuff, yeah. So, because that's pretty valuable, you know, it's kind of coming back around. Okay, let's look at this at a more holistic, because now we've got different angles that we've even heard from. So I'm excited about that. There's, listen to that cheering. So is there any other line item to be pulled from the spreadsheet today that's possibly ready to go?
No, I think next week. I think we've already, yeah, we spent...
Just making sure.
Spent seven.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Greg.
So item number 14, Community Development Department Fee Waiver Policy. Goodness, that's a tough act to follow. After we get through this, we'll cheer for you, too.
We cleared the room.
You cleared the room.
You can just mic drop now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherry, Community Development Staff. Joining me today is Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. And we are here today to talk to you about some proposed revisions to our fee waiver policy. The intent of those revisions are to align the policy with our current procedures, eliminate some of the personal information that we previously requested, and then also to make it more clear, the process to request a fee waiver. So submitted to you for review was a memo sort of describing all of that, the original policy that has some yellow highlighted areas, and those are the items that we were proposing to be removed, and then the revised draft of the proposed fee waiver policy.
Definitely just kind of brings it up to date. Some of the items in there just sounds like they're from a different era.
Was this from 1993?
Um...
A lot of things have been that we've been updating lately.
You know, it was revised in 2000, well, I think it was created in 2004, revised in 2006, 2013 as well, and now we're proposing a 2021 revision. So it, you know, in essence, it goes from a seven-page document down to about four. There were all sorts of, there was all sorts of requirements in the original policy that we did not utilize, which could have been community service in exchange for fee waivers. There were, you know, I'm not sure if you want to go through each of these changes individually, or if you've had time to review that information.
Real well highlighted, yeah.
Yeah.
It was interesting, I was shredding bank statements once, they used to put your social security number on a bank statement. I was like, can you imagine?
Exchange.
I know. No, I mean, it's like, Gary.
I do have a few questions. And just the idea, the concept of doing community service to get a fee waiver, I think is cool. I appreciate that, practically speaking, it may not be something that we can do, but my questions were, you know, mainly to try to understand what's coming in right now? It's like, who is requesting fee waivers for what? And, you know, because I don't have a really good sense of, you know, how this, how fee waivers are being used or how they could be used.
Sure. So really, in general, it's not utilized very often. And most frequently, I believe, if there's a, so for example, if there's a code compliance case that's outstanding, and it's less costly for the county to waive the fees and assist with the owner of the parcel to clean that up than it is to pursue the case through the code enforcement procedures, manual procedures, I think that's one instance that we see most frequently. And again, I did an analysis over quite a long period of time, and it seemed like there were a lot of fee waivers that occurred during the Great Recession time period, as you can imagine, and really not many since then.
Got it. Okay. And so that's the main, the main potential use and previous use of...
That is my understanding. So, you know, for example, the Community Development Director has the delegated latitude to make those decisions as it may relate to a code enforcement case or a lesser cost of compliance. Then the board still retains the right to hear all appeals. You also have the right to, for example, if there's a natural disaster, if we want a fee waiver, like a blanket fee waiver, that's retained by the board. And then there's another, or any other case where public health and safety is an issue, the board has the right to make those decisions.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, again, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director, to Commissioner Chang's comment, you know, we have seen recently a request that doesn't fit the existing or even the proposed changes to our fee waiver program, and without getting the specifics. But it's, you know, it's a large-scale project that would potentially involve either a text amendment or a plan amendment zone change in a certain area of our county. And so, you know, there are occasions where parties are expressing frustration with our fee process, but they don't meet the, you know, being indigent or, you know, a nonprofit status. And as Sherry's research shows, and the pattern of practice has been, Deschutes County and the Community Development Department just doesn't authorize those kind of requests. And invariably, they can, they can work their way up to administration or the board. But from our standpoint, as a fee-dependent department, it's not something that we have had the liberty to consider, and so therefore, we've, you know, we've denied them, denied that request, and often than not, it ends the discussion, and those parties step back and evaluate whether or not that's something they want to actually apply for, or they reconsider.
And I might add that another criteria for even being eligible is indigency. So, you know, and we would verify that just through an affidavit of indigency based on that person's statement.
Well, it's going to be valuable to get a, you know, known work permitted on the documents associated with properties, so that's always going to be the goal. Safety and health is the key to this, but, yeah, we want to help people most in need also.
Commissioners, if I just may offer just a couple of comments. First, a lot of jurisdictions don't have a fee waiver policy, and so it's always unclear for whomever is coming to the counter, who's going to the elected body, are there fee waivers or not? And if so, what are the policies, what are the... what are the, what are the policies, what are the procedures? And so it's kind of a discretionary. So having a policy to begin with really provides clarity to everybody. The policy that we've had in place, since I implemented it for nearly a decade, in close coordination with Tom Anderson, who was, I think, largely the author of it in the early 2000s, there are still a lot of phrases that have been left to interpretation. And sometimes it's staff at the counter, that somebody's asking for a fee waiver, and so they provide the policy, and they say, oh, well, it's for these purposes. And, well, it's like, well, but that's not how we've interpreted it. And so it's, I think that the department's done a great job of really providing that clarity, so that when staff has that request at the counter, they can explain exactly what it is. If it's appealed to me and/or to the Board, it's clear. And the Board always has discretion. But it just provides clarity for everybody through, through the entire process as well. And I can give you a number of examples that Sherry is certainly aware of, where, for example, there's an elderly couple that, the husband has passed away, the wife has learned that the husband had some improvements to the house that were not permitted, she doesn't have the resources, she's, she's struggling to, to permit as well as complete the permitting process and then to bring it into compliance. And we can see, if we pursue this through code enforcement, we can, we can get there. But it's going to be expensive for the county, it's going to be a real challenge. Whereas if we, if we can waive fully or partially those permitting fees upfront, then she can use the, the resources that she has to, to actually make the improvements that are necessary. If there's unpermitted work, how do we get it permitted? And so that's a, that's a real example of how the fee waiver can really work for, for everybody, and is a good financial decision for the county. Waive the fees that may be up to $1,000, just to get the process moving forward. The spouse then invests that $1,000 into the improvements, and the case can then be resolved.
Right.
That's really good to hear, because, you know, at that point in someone's life, when they've lost their spouse, and they are, you know, really probably kind of lost, and now they have to take over the responsibilities for the county to do that, it's, it's a very compassionate plan, and I'm, I'm really thankful to hear it.
I guess the one other piece of this I'd like to just explore and make sure I understand is that if we're granting these fee waivers, and we have costs associated with, you know, performing various services, you know, that that would otherwise be covered by fees, that is coming out of, you know, CDD's other revenue streams, which are, you know, primarily, you know, fees. So basically, other people are paying more fees, you know, higher fees, so that we can, we can sort of, you know, absorb these, we can subsidize these public good needs in some other cases. And I, in some ways, I feel like if we are, you know, if you're providing public benefits, public goods, that really aren't, you know, that are hard to tie to the person who is paying a fee for something else, that, that in the ideal world, I would prefer to pay for, you know, I think we should do that, and I, but I, in the ideal world, I'd like to pay for it from somewhere else. And, and so I just want to, I don't know, I don't have a sense of the magnitude. It doesn't sound like we're talking about very many dollars. But if, in the future, this becomes a big-ticket item, I'd like us to consider, you know, possibly, you know, providing a fund out of the general fund, or something like that, to provide these public benefits without burdening, you know, the, the person who's just coming in to pay their, you know, pay their fee for the project that they want to do.
One thought real quick. So for the last 50 years, Central Oregon has been through boom and bust cycles, right? I mean, we either were growing fast, or we're stopped dead in our tracks for a little while. So as, as we're growing fast, the fee revenue and dollars are being created by all those fees, and there's even a, a reserve fund being built. So it's really that flat period or the down period where fees have stopped because the economy's really slowed down, and there's more of those needs. So that's the moment where we could say, oh, you know, general fund subsidy of the department because the economy slowed way down. So, and we've kind of seen that in the last 10 years. So, I mean, and it's been discussed a little bit, just like that.
Yeah. And I don't mean to jump, jump ahead, but it's probably, it, to the, to the, in the order of $2,000 to $3,000 per year of a budget between 7.5 and 11 million.
Oh, gosh.
And so that's, that's the magnitude of it. But, but Commissioner Chang, this is, it's a great question, because I have taken fee waiver requests to the, to the Board on occasion for a public or a nonprofit entity, and the Board has either decided to approve the fee waiver and then made the department whole, or the Board has declined the fee waiver request, and then provided a grant out of lottery funds or another funding mechanism to help offset the, the costs for the nonprofit organization. So I don't know that we've had any that have come to the Board this, this calendar year. But, but that does happen on occasion.
Okay. Then there's also two phases for that. At the desk, when you're like, well, you know, maybe a fee waiver is either asked for or offered, however that happens, which is just kind of the business of the Community Development Department. Or if it gets escalated, all of a sudden, it becomes a public meeting if we're discussing, and that's a whole different phase for a fee waiver.
Okay. Well, I'm glad, yeah, I'm, I'm glad that we're not, I'm glad that it sounds like in the past, we haven't, we haven't taken this out of CDD's ability to do other work, or basically, or, you know, kind of saddled other fee payers with additional costs to provide what are just general public goods that are unrelated to their project. And that, I'm comfortable with that.
So is there a motion?
Yes, I move approval of the proposed revisions to the CDD fee waiver policy.
Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
So that's it for our published items today. We do have
Thank you, Sherry.
Executive session, if we're available for that. Have we take
I see John is on.
Have we take other items, and then maybe just stand up for just a moment, and then get back to John?
Okay.
So other, other items. I have two items. So at the beginning of the Board meeting, we're taking citizen input. As commissioners, we're seeing these emails come in and being able to read them real time. And I've been just kind of sharing the topics. Are, are we comfortable with that? You know, so just like we talked about public testimony through Zoom a couple of weeks ago, or, because we could read each one and acknowledge. This is citizen input. When somebody sits in front of us, they, they state their name and the topic, you know, so we could take time and read these. So I'm just making sure we're not disconnected from what you might expect to see. You know, this, this stack from regarding affordable housing, it kind of goes all over the place, different opinions. I want to thank everybody for that input. And as I say, we're able to read these real time, they're cc'd to our inboxes if they come in. Is there any thoughts? Because as a chair, I could be reading each one of them, too.
You could be. No, I mean, government transparency is really important.
Well, that's why I say it's attached to the minutes. I'm just making sure we're not.
You could paraphrase them, could you not?
Well, yeah. And I, but that means, you know, I'll take five, 10, 15 minutes to go through
That's okay.
So, yeah.
I think paraphrasing might be a really good idea, because people, you know, with the Zoom and everything, people are feeling very disconnected. And, you know, we saw that Monday night with our marijuana meeting, three people were on the phone, and it really wasn't working. It was clearly apparent that in-person is much better. So I would say paraphrase.
Each one you're referring to?
Yeah, or you could say, okay, I have seven, they're from so-and-so and so-and-so, and they're all, this is what the message is.
For and against.
Yeah, it'll take, it'll take a bit of coordination, but
That's what I'm thinking, because I just
Yeah, I would do that.
I feel like, I feel like the way that we've been doing it, the topics are mentioned, we share a little bit about the for and against, or kind of the, the concern that is, is embodied in the, in the comment, and then it is in the, in the public record. I mean, it's in the minutes for, for people to look if they're, if they're curious.
So then
I could see, you know, it, there would be some value in, in sort of summarizing or distilling a little bit. I mean, maybe we could have, you know, maybe we could have Whitney or our public information, you know, person just kind of do a synopsis for us, and that, that you could just, you could just read through very quickly.
Yeah, so that's possible.
As opposed to, you know, you on the fly trying to like
Figuring out what the name is
Go through the stack.
Is there a for or a against?
Yeah, I don't
That would take a while.
I don't, I don't think we should, I don't think we should read each one. I think a, a little bit, kind of summarization or aggregation of it is, is good. And I feel like we have been doing that to some degree. So I, I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with the way that we've been doing it. If we want, if we want a little bit more, yeah.
Because then we can say, because I don't know if there's 20 or 30 here. You know, I, sometimes I've estimated about, I think there's about something, something.
Right.
So maybe a one-page piece. So this would be for Sharon to help us possibly.
Yeah.
She's going to be thrilled. Yes.
I do think, or again, our, you know, you know, our communications staff, who's
Yeah, whoever, yeah. Little bit better summary upfront.
A little, yeah, maybe a little bit more.
That I can basically read as the chair, because I could go all over the way with it.
We got 25 comments about affordable housing, and some of them said this, and some of them said that. That would be great.
Any thoughts, Dave? Is that?
I think you'd have to ask what the purpose of public input is. Is it to communicate to the Board, or is it to have a
Uh-huh.
For an extended audience? If it's to communicate to the Board, the email system works appropriately, you all get the citizen input email. If it's to give somebody a public forum to communicate broader, of course, before Zoom, that meant that two or three people that were in the room. Now it's, it's, it's different. So
Well, yeah, so then I could be in
You probably need to ascertain what the real, what the purpose of it ultimately is.
Each person who, like a person who's chairing the meeting, generically, could end up reading a statement that's critiquing me on anything I've ever done in my life. You know, I mean, so we could be reading a statement that's pretty negative for, for, you know, impersonal even, because I mean, there could be any kind of content in these things. So as I say, I just knew that, I kind of skipped through at the beginning, but we should acknowledge it for what it is. And we are able to read each one of them.
Yeah, I mean, you know, to this kind of like platform concept, I, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily, you know, if it's going to be, if their written comments are going to be in the minutes, I don't, I don't feel like we need to go through in detail what people's comments are. But I, I think that there is real value for the community to understand the order of magnitude. If we get 50 emails about something, it's, I think it's, it's useful to relay that to people that, you know, we heard from a lot of people about this topic. And, and it doesn't have to, we don't have to give a ton of detail about it, but
Yeah. So I, I'm comfortable with that. So just a little, because I don't know how many are in this little clip here.
Right.
So just a little bit more, just a little bit more content, you know, how many there are here, and if there's a clarity, black and, you know, for or against, or on the topic of. So maybe there's three, three ways that we can acknowledge it. Okay, just a little bit more. And then also, for information, the summary of assessment and tax rule was published, their, you know, the assessor's office. So this does have the tax rates all calculated, finalized for the year. As of January 1st this year, the tax bills are in dial, and they're going to be mailed soon. So I don't know what the date is, but it's, it's happening, and it's available. So that was interesting to learn a couple of days ago. You can go to dial and see your tax bill now, even if it hasn't been mailed to yourself or your, whoever pays the tax bill. Any other items?
No, I don't believe so.
Anything else?
I'm not, yeah, I'm just trying to go back through the meetings I had this week.
Oh, I did have Sisters yesterday.
Sisters?
Edco. And we lost our person. Cappy has moved on to a bigger and better project, which is great, but she's still working in Central Oregon, so that's wonderful.
Serving the region, yep.
And we had an enormous discussion with Roger Lee. John Stark was on, on our Zoom platform, on do we hire another executive director? What is it we can do? So we're kind of working through all those bumps. But it does seem really important that Sisters maintains their presence. You know, having Laird come into town, the diversity is of the components of Sisters is rather amazing. So I'm, we're going to meet again next month. And I think that's a good thing to keep discussing.
I guess the, the MPO met yesterday, and I guess one of the, the key sharebacks, the two key sharebacks from that I would relay are, number one, there was a lot more additional discussion about the, the safety campaign, the transportation safety campaign that, that's cranking up in the area. And then, number two, there was also a lot of discussion about a bike pedestrian crossing in the North 97 Corridor project area somewhere, and what that would look like. It might be an undercrossing, it might be, they were mostly talking about an undercrossing, not a, not trying to build some kind of skybridge or something like that. But that's, those were two takeaways from, from that meeting.
So I have a couple more items. The Project Wildfire met yesterday morning, so it was a kind of a debrief from agencies and a good community meeting. It's all on Zoom. Commissioner Dare was in attendance also, so the two of us were there. And community organizations. So Project Wildfire, you know, letting the world know that the time for fall cleanup and the half-price sale is going to be available. But it was good to hear from the agencies just about their, their experience this year. Everybody was in a pretty good mood. They're talking about firefighter fatigue at this point, but, you know, switching from firefighting mode to prescribed burns, and then planning for next year were some of the topics that were discussed.
Well, the really fortunate new numbers for our community were that our fires were less than average. And even though, you know, we had that one March 28th, that, you know, probably woke up and scared the whole community, our numbers were really actually outstanding. We had, what, we had the Grand View, Grand View, we had Darlene, we had, we had, you know, significant fires, but our numbers overall, considering the drought, how, how dry our vegetation is, it was a, you know, hopefully, we're going to get a lot of rain. They said, truly, that's when we can really take a big breath, because when we get that major rain, and we're all hoping for snow where it should be in the snowpack area.
Also, divided highways open south of Sun River. So they're still working on the interchanges a little bit, but if down there, it's definitely splits off, and the new section's being utilized. Van de Verts, either straight across to go north, or there's a turn lane to, and a turnaround to go
A J-turn.
Yeah, from north to go across. So it's, it's all functioning, and as I say, it's still be a construction zone, but it's being utilized. Also, thinking of the MPO and possibly COACT, Tumalo could be asking for an undercrossing for sewer. That's the other thing that is a reminder, that we've got Tumalo interchange roundabout project happening. And if design gets finalized, and, you know, ODOT kind of locks in what they're going to do, and then the next week, they come back and say, oh, by the way, we want to put a pipe right over here. That's just one of those things we all need to be informed about. And I think Chris Doty and Bob Townsend have heard about this. But that's the other implied thing here, is the timing. So we have to remember that.
Well, the really good news is the undercrossing is up the hill a ways, because it's going to be so much cheaper to put it at that point. And so I would think
This is just the sewer
The sewer line could
Sewer pipe.
The bike head undercrossing, but
Yeah.
We will rapidly lose the opportunity to put it in underneath the roundabout
Yeah, sewer pipe.
If, if that, yeah, but those are both, those are both opportunities, the roundabout in the near term, and then the bike head undercrossing in the, in the long term. And I, you know, I don't know enough about the situation to say, you know, that one's the ideal location for
You know, just that we don't want to lock down the
Right.
Thing that would have been optimal, that's just impossible.
Right, right. But it just seems like with the, with the roundabout construction so close, I, I can't imagine them kind of pulling together the concept fast enough to do it while that, while that roundabout site is being torn up. But I could be wrong.
Yeah. So it's just if it comes up, and all of a sudden. And then also, the unconference yesterday was the entrepreneurial ideas. There was about eight or 10 people presenting yesterday afternoon over at the Tech Center, 1001 MK. And then also, the Ben Venture Conference is happening this week. So it's a real exciting time. Central Oregon is known for that Ben Venture Conference. The, the new startup ideas, the launch phase, the expansion phase, investment happens, and it's impacts in the Northwest. So it's pretty exciting hosting the Ben Venture Conference again.
And for the first time in seven years, the Columbia River Circuit Finals are going to be starting tomorrow night at our fairgrounds indoors. So please go online to columbiarivercircuit.com, I believe. So please go online to columarirovercircuit.com, I believe, and you can order tickets for Thursday, Friday or Saturday night. And I'm wishing my niece Mary Shay that she'll do a great job.
There you go. Okay, seeing nothing else, let's go to